I want to welcome you to tonight's meeting of the City of Columbia Heights, City Council for Monday, May 11th, 2020. Could I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Biskins?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Very happy to be here.
Councilmember Mershen?
Here.
Councilmember Nowitzki?
Here.
Mayor Schmidt?
Here.
For those of us that are here, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our mission statement is to provide the highest quality public services. Services will be provided in a fair, respectful, and professional manner that effectively address changing citizen and community needs in a physically responsible manner. Next item is the approval of the agenda. The council, upon majority of vote of its members, may make additions or deletions to the agenda. These may be items submitted after the agenda preparation deadline. I do not believe we have any at this point, so can I get a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Mershen, second by Councilmember Nowitzki. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We do have two proclamations this week. One is from, the first one is from the National Public Works Week, May 17 through 23rd. And Kevin Hanson is here too, but I'll let you come get this later. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets, and highways, parks, public buildings, solid waste collection, and snow removal, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Donna K. Schmidt, Mayor of the City of Columbia Heights, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17 through May 23rd, 2020, as National Public Works Week in the City of Columbia Heights, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions that public works officials make every day to protect our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Did you want to say something? I'm not going to hand this to...
No, that would be great. Here, members of the council. I think it's just a good opportunity to take a moment just to, you know, really recognize and to basically, a little bit of a shout out to the work that our crew does, and a lot of the work that they do is unseen. I think people recognize when we're out plowing snow or patching potholes, but when you think of urban forestry, when you think of the construction projects and all the various things that we do here, it's nice to have the staff that we do, the working relationships that we have with our staff, and I'm, for one, very happy to work with the work group that we have and also the service that they provide to the community. And it's just, from my perspective, it's just a good chance for me to just say thanks for the work that they all do. The one thing, though, is as far as we do get notes and sometimes the public just, these days, it's a little bit different with COVID-19, so just to remember that when people come up and approach us, to remember that in our public interactions. But, no, it's just for me, I don't often get to say that to our group, and really, it's a big thanks for them and all the hard work that they do, too.
They do an outstanding job. We see them, we see their trucks and know that they're down in places we would never want to be and appreciate that. Thank you for that. It's been interesting to see, we have, you have still a lot of people that have been there for many years, but you've got some younger people.
We certainly are that group in transition. We have the old and the new.
But it's fun to see their ideas and their enthusiasm as they come into this, too, and thank you for your leadership, too.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The second one is for Police Week, May 10 through 16, 2020. To recognize National Police Week 2020 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Columbia Heights Police Department, whereas there have been 58,866 assaults against law enforcement officers in 2018, resulting in approximately 18,005 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, over 21,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice, including Kurt Ramsdale of the Columbia Heights Police Department, who was killed in the line of duty on July 30, 1977. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. Therefore, be it resolved that the Columbia Heights City Council formally designates May 10 through 16, 2020, as Police Week in the City of Columbia Heights and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. And good to see you, Chief Lanning.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and I'll pick that up from you probably tomorrow, so that'll be, that'll be great. Thank you for that. And so, as you mentioned, in 1962, President Kennedy made this week National Police Week, and May 15th, actually, Peace Officers Memorial Day. And it's a great time for us and for officers around the United States to actually honor those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. And as you mentioned, this is also a time that we pay tribute to Kurt Ramsdale, who was killed in the line of duty July 30th, 1977. And if you'll recall, in that particular incident, that occurred actually at the Anoka County Jail during a jail transport, where he was shot in the abdomen with a .25 caliber handgun, and also a jail detention deputy was also injured at that time as well. So normally during this week, you'll see quite a few events from all over the nation and all over the world to honor all the officers who have given the ultimate sacrifice. In this particular case, because of the COVID-19 epidemic or pandemic, the National Law Enforcement Memorial Foundation is actually going to be holding a virtual candlelight vigil that will take place on Wednesday, May 13th, at 7:00 Central Time. So you can actually just go on to the National Law Enforcement Memorial Foundation website, and it'll take you right there to the, to their virtual candlelight vigil, where at that time, they'll read the 307 names that will be added to the memorial this year. And then on Friday, the Minnesota Law Enforcement Memorial Association, or Lima, will also be paying, holding a tribute on their Facebook page, and that will be at 7:00 on Friday evening as well. Normally, they will, they will do, they actually do a two-day tribute down at the Capitol Grounds. Obviously, with things the way they are, they're really narrowing that down, and they're going to be doing an online tribute, which will be nice. They actually did a complete refurbish of the memorial this year, so I heard it looks just fantastic, and so you'll get to see a little bit of that Friday night at 7:00. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next item is our consent agenda. These items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted as part of the consent agenda by one motion. Items removed from consent agenda approval will be taken up as a next order of business. If there's no wish to change on the consent agenda, then let's move on. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Item A is approval of the minutes of the city council meeting from April 27, 2020. Item B is acceptance of board and commission meeting minutes, and that's the EDA minutes from March 23rd, the planning commission minutes from March 4th, and the library board minutes of March 4th. Item C is the annual declaration that the City of Columbia Heights does not waive the monetary limits on the municipal tort liability under Minnesota Statute 466.04. Item D is approval of Amendment 1 to the City Hall Architectural Contract with LEOA Daily. This amount does need to change. It's listed in your agenda as $32,086. That needs to change to $39,670. That is because they're a subcontractor under LEOA Daily's contract, so it covers administrative and coordination costs.
So what was that number again?
It is, the total is $39,670. That replaces the $32,086 that's in your packet. And that's for the new City Hall Audio-Visual Systems, Cableing System, Digital Signage, Video Surveillance, and Security Systems, Access Control, and Speech Privacy. Item E is approval of the business license applications in your packet. And item F is a review of the bills totaling $686,420.31.
If there are no questions regarding the consent agendas, can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskins, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is public hearings. First one is approving easement vacations for the property located at 3989 Central Avenue Northeast. Ah, thank you.
Hello.
Welcome back.
Yes, hi, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It is nice to see you all. A lattice has requested to vacate easements on the property located at 3989 Central Avenue. The property is the site of the future planned mixed-use development, which was approved by the council earlier this year. The applicant has identified some roadway and sidewalk and landscape easements that need to be vacated as part of the redevelopment project. So attached in your report are the descriptions, and if you have any questions, happy to answer those.
Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding this request? Okay. Then if there are no questions, we are all very excited about this, to see, continue to move on. Can I get a motion to waive the reading, please?
Move to waive the reading of Resolutions 2020-44 and 2020-45, there being ample copies available to the public.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskins, second by Councilmember Nowitzki. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then, move to approve?
Move to approve Resolution Number 2020-44 and Resolution Number 2020-45. Vacating roadway and sidewalk and landscape easements for the property located at 3989 Central Avenue Northeast, subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall be responsible for providing legal descriptions of all easements that are subject to be created. Said descriptions are subject to review by the city attorney. And second, the applicant shall be responsible for filing the easement vacations within Anoka County Recorder's Office with attachments below.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Biskins, a second by Councilmember Mershen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, and then you get the next one, too?
I sure do.
Okay, this is approval, approving a conditional use permit and variance for a fence at 4141 University Avenue Northeast. This is Prodeo?
That is correct. Friends of Prodeo, or Prodeo Academy, has applied for a conditional use permit and variance for the property at 4141 University. In September, the city council of 2019, as you recall, the city council approved the CUP and plans that allowed for the school to be constructed, and as you, I'm sure, have noticed, the school's gone up and is looking really great. At that time, the landscape plans indicated that the play area on the southern end of the property would be surrounded by a fence. Along a portion of the fence, the applicant would like to have 10 feet in height, have a section of that be 10 feet in height. This section runs north and south, about 76 feet in length, and it's between the southwest western edge adjacent to the school's entrance drive and the middle of the property. The fence would extend from the south end of the northwest corner of the building and down to the south property line, and this is shown and read on the plan that was included in your packet. The purpose of the fence would be just to prevent any play objects like balls or frisbees from rolling down the hill and entering the driveway and parking area that's on the west side of the property, where there's also grade change. Fences exceeding six feet in height require a conditional use permit, and the ordinance further requires that fences cannot exceed seven feet in height, hence the need for the variance. Overall, the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan for this property. Staff has reviewed the findings for the conditional use permit and the variance and finds that the applicant meets those findings, and so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Anything came up at the planning and zoning meeting regarding this?
No.
I think they understood, they had, because they understood the reason for it, and it was in a good spot, just because they would be chasing balls and having to go down this hill and clean it up, and so I don't think there were any issues with them.
Yeah, just a couple of questions, but other than that, no, no members from the public spoke on the issue. And it was recommended by the planning commission.
Correct. And that one is pretty, it is a pretty steep area.
Right.
Is the, is the play area actually on the steep area, or is it just?
No, if you, here, you should have...
I couldn't see elevation.
Yeah, this particular document doesn't have, does not show the elevations, but right where they're showing the fence outlined and read there?
Yes.
Going west, that's where the grade does start to change, towards the drive.
Okay. All right. If nobody else has any questions or comments, could I get a motion to waive the reading?
Move to waive the reading of Resolution 2020-46, there being ample copies available to the public.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Nowitzki, second by Councilmember Mershen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And a motion to approve?
Move to approve Resolution 2020-46, approving a conditional use permit and variance for a fence at 4141 University Avenue Northeast, subject to certain conditions. One, the site plan included in this submittal shall become part of this approval. Two, all other applicable local, state, and federal requirements shall be met at all times. And three, the applicant will meet the requirements outlined in the letter from the building official dated April 17th, 2020.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Nowitzki, second by Councilmember Mershen. We didn't get a copy of the letter, I just realized.
Oh.
Was there anything specific?
Essentially, just that a building permit's required because it's considered a structure.
Okay.
That's the extent of the letter. I can certainly, I have one.
Did I miss it?
It should be in there. It's a one, it's really short, it's a, you know, a couple of sentences.
Oh.
But that's the issue, the reason he put that in writing is just to clarify that a building permit's required, because it's over seven feet tall.
Oh, okay, you're right, it's just barely two paragraphs.
See, I can bring you mine if you'd like.
Probably why I missed it. All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Next item is city council administrative reports. I know we are quarantined, stay at home. Anybody want to start? Connie, you want to start?
Well, when I went, I was, attended the online National Neighborhood Watch meeting that the police, and they're planning on doing one in June. There are probably 20 people on this one, too, and people appreciated and liked, they informed of things that are going on with the city and the things they're doing, in particular with the virus situation. And then, I found one thing to do while we're quarantined and away from home is gardening. We're working on, I volunteered two Saturdays to help spread mulch over at the Blooming Sunshine Gardens in Lomiaki. It's a very easy way to stay apart from everyone, and the city's been generous enough to provide the mulch, and all we do is bring the shovels and the wheelbarrows and work. It's a nice way to be outside, at least see people from a distance and get some stuff done, so, and that's it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Well, I'd like to just comment on the proclamation for the police, because I've had two of my close friends get murdered while on duty, and one was from Jamaica and one was from Minneapolis, and I knew them real well, both of them, and it's been, police have a tough job, always have had, still do have, and the proclamation is for safety for them, because there's always someone out there that's after to kill someone. And other than that, I, our company, I'm very grateful to this point. I think I'm going to get tested this week, but no one in our company, we have between 300 and 400 people, have tested positive to my knowledge for this virus. So God's been good to us, and I thank Him for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Mershen, any updates?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. Councilmember Nowitzki?
Haven't been able to do much with being at home, but still have been enjoying the parks and getting out and walking a lot with the kids, and thanks to everyone that has gone out to parks and has respected the social distancing and not made it a problem that there's, because there's a high amount of people at some of the parks, but everyone's doing their part, getting out and enjoying the weather, so it's good to see.
Yes. I'm going to start out my portion by apologizing to Malcolm Watson, because last time, I was supposed to announce that May 7th was the National Day of Prayer. He had requested me to mention that, and I totally forgot, too, so just wanted to say, even though it was, things have, were very different this year for a National Day of Prayer. This is something that's been in place as it stands since 1952, and President Truman started this regularly every year. This year, it probably looked a little bit different, because they had it out on the lawn, I believe, and they sat socially distant, and it, this year, they had representatives from Latter Day Saints, evangelicals, Catholics, Muslims, Jews, and Hindus, so it was a wide variety of religions that were there praying for our nation, praying for our elected officials, praying that the virus would stop, and appreciate that. So again, my apologies to Malcolm Watson, because I did forget to mention it last time. Also, we get updates on the census. I know this is KT Jacobs thing, but today, looking online, it says the national average for response is at 58.5%. Minnesota is still ranked number one at 68.7, which is great. It's not perfect, but it's good. Anoka County is tied with Los Alamos in New Mexico for sixth place at 78.2, which is amazing. And as you probably are aware, we're trying to, we make sure that we have all our representatives when it comes to elections next time, and they did note that CD5 is ranked at 69.1%, so all that territory that CD5 covers, this is important to them, so we can maintain those officials. Columbia Heights is kind of in the middle. We're ranked at 348, we're tied with Ortonville, Minnesota. This is just compared with Minnesota cities, and we're ranked at 67.5, so we're still above the nation, national average. So I'm still hoping that when the library opens, that we'll get more numbers, and we'll start seeing more people actually filling out those forms online. We will have somebody there at the library to help us with that. So, good, we're doing good, but if you haven't filled out your online form, make sure you do it. And then, I did, Kelly, do you want to be next, or Nicole, do you want to be next?
I can go next, mine's quick.
Okay. Nicole has some announcements, too, for those people who are coming in for interviews.
Yeah, so just, well, it's more for the council, just a quick reminder that we're having board and commission interviews on Wednesday and Thursday, and just to let me know if you would like to attend virtually on Zoom or come in person. We have candidates that are doing both options, so just let me know, and I have stuff for you if you want to attend virtually.
Do we still have 24?
Yes.
Okay. Great. And then, city manager, bourgeois.
Just to fill in a few pieces here, the police department is hosting another Red Cross Blood Drive that will be next Tuesday, May 19th. It will be in the fire bays at the Public Safety Building. It's by appointment only, so you do need to go on to the Red Cross's website and sign up for a time. They do still have time slots available, I checked on it today, so please, if you're interested, do that. It's from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. next Tuesday, May 19th. We have entered into an agreement with a tree provider, it's Rainbow Tree Care, to have private property owners, if they have trees with emerald ash pour or preventive, just ash trees in general that they would like to have removed, they can contact Rainbow Tree Care to take advantage of the price that we've negotiated, the bulk price, or they can go on to rainbottreecare.com/columbia-heights, and they'll be able to take advantage of that price. That information will be on the newsletter as well. Newsletter, I'm sorry, yes.
Can it be on the website, too?
Yeah.
Online, because there was somebody looking for another company to get a bid from, and I went online and I couldn't find it on our website, so.
Yes.
We thought we can refer to people. So it's only just one company that's going to be doing that type of thing for residents?
Other companies will do them, we've just negotiated a bulk price with this company.
Okay.
Yep. And we will get that on the website.
Just ash trees, right?
Just ash trees, correct, yes. Yep. And then, the library is holding a virtual meditation workshop with our own Arvin from the Spirituality Center here in town. They are doing that on their Facebook page tomorrow from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. It's called Virtual Meditation Workshop: Inner Peace in Turbulent Times. Seems fitting for right now. They are, this is an adult program, and they're hoping to do one program every month with different facilitators. So Arvin does this month, and they'll have something different in June that we'll announce at that time. Stores 1 and 2, liquor stores 1 and 2 are now open for the altered service, so they're open from noon to 8:00, Monday through Saturday, and it's one register, they're limiting the number of people in the stores, but they did open store number 2 now as well, so feel free to go in and visit them there. And then, just a quick overview, the city council at the work session last week did go over some closures that we'll be doing this summer due to the virus, so looking at, especially the big ones being the splash pad and the waiting pools, will be closed this summer. Those are the two biggies. The parks will remain open, where, of course, they're posted to encourage social distancing, discouraging playground use, although it's not prohibited, using social distancing for basketball, play, and those types of things. We are still working on programming at the rec center, youth programming particularly for the summer. We are planning to provide youth programming, we're just not sure how it's going to look. It will all depend on where we're at with the governor's orders and looking into the summer, where we're at with virus numbers as well. The event wagon is still available. We are increasing the fee for that, though, to account for the cleaning, added cleaning that we need to do for those items every time that it goes out. Park facilities are also still available to rent. We will likely be limiting the number of people and requiring that the people renting those facilities are, you know, signing that they'll limit the number of people in those buildings to whatever the CDC and the governor are recommending at whatever time it is during the summer. Hopefully, as we go into the summer months... Hopefully, as we go into the summer months, we'll be able to have more and more people participating. Still trying to get senior programming at some level for the summer. That's, I know it's, people are asking about it now. People are getting lonely and wanting to get out and socialize, but we want to make sure they're safe as well, so there's some balancing and discussions that we're doing there. And that is all that I have.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And the city attorney is not with us tonight, so can I get a, if there's no other comments, no other business, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskins, second by Councilmember Nowinski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, we are adjourned.